Eduardo, I don't know where he is today, but he's not here.
Oh, okay.
Good afternoon, everyone. Maybe we could begin. Welcome to, I think, what will be our fourth town hall meeting on the university budget and the state of the fiscal situation in California and the country. We all appreciate your taking the time this afternoon to visit with us. And our format is to try, as we've done in the past meetings, is to reflect upon what we now know and what plans the campus is taking at this moment in time. Second, to reflect upon what will likely happen or might may happen in the next four to six weeks with the special election. And then try to respond to some specific questions that have been raised by students and employee groups to clarify that. And then, as always, open the door to brainstorm questions and ideas about how Sonoma State University might weather the particular fiscal situation we face. There's a white piece of paper, which is several sheets, that I think Barbara and Alicia were kind enough to pass out. And from the university's administration's perspective, and I think probably the constituent groups represented at this table would pretty much agree with these numbers, this is what we now know today is likely situation to confront us. So let's just start at the top. I'm not certain I have a microphone, Barbara.
Thank you, Your Honor.
I'm okay?
Yes.
Everyone can hear reasonably well?
Yeah, I'll respond to get attention.
Okay. This is the microphone here? I can move it closer? Better? All right. So let's just go through this sheet. First, we are indicating at the very beginning that the trustees will act in May on a 10% state university fee increase. Everyone, I think, is aware of that. I know Derek and the student body has issues associated with that, but that is very likely to take place at the May board meeting, a 10% increase in the state university fee. That was part of the governor's proposal, and I imagine that will come to pass. There would, of course, be a third set aside for financial aid. That's the 834, and that's by trustee policy. The $1,471 represents Sonoma State University's share of the special session reduction, which was in the January or in the April budget deal. The unfunded mandatory cost, $816,000, represents the University, Sonoma State University's share largely of healthcare premium increases for our employees, all of our employee groups, some money for energy costs, and some money for new space. The $200,000 estimate for unfunded factory salary increases, the PPI program, this would be year two of that program, and that's an estimate. It probably, from my discussions with Melinda Barnard and our colleagues in faculty affairs, will come in a little bit lower than 200, but we're estimating at the moment 200 until that process works itself through. When we estimate our utility bill for next year, Christopher Geno and Craig Dawson, who are responsible for analyzing that, are projecting that we will be short in our utility budget by about $200,000 next year, so we reflect that. Faculty development represents the year three program of our five-year commitment to bring a faculty development-based budget of $1 million into existence, so that's a campus-based item. The diversity initiatives, we used to call that, or at least the last time we were together, we called that CCGS. And I'm aware that in various discussions in the diversity dialogue that's currently underway on campus, that name may change, so I've stopped calling it CCGS and plumped it together just into the area of diversity initiatives of $325,000. And there's actually a detailed budget being floated around in the various consultative groups on the diversity issue. That brings us total to $1,585,000. All of that is not new information to any of you. You all saw that the last time we were together. The new information now is final, and that's the $50 million additional budget reduction, which comes to pass as a result of the fact of the state officials agreeing that the federal stimulus money will not be $10 billion as hoped for, but rather 8.6 billion. And when the eight point, when we don't hit the 10 billion number, that puts into place a trigger that results in another $50 million budget decrease to the CSU. And this represents our projected share of that. So that's new information since the last time we met, bringing our total in the operating fund needs of $2,735,000. Based on everyone that I've been able to talk to and other members of the panel may wish to comment, this probably represents the best-case scenario for Sonoma State University. And as Andy will reflect in a bit, this number could change as a result of the May 19 elections, which we'll talk about in a minute. Outside the operating fund, there are remaining issues that are important to Sonoma State University to be resolved, just to review them quickly. Our endowment, the university's endowment, like all university endowments, is not generating earnings in the current year because of the situation in the overall financial markets. And yet, many of our academic programs, particularly those that rely on endowed funds, including student scholarships, are anticipating receiving $1,168,000, which will not be available from the foundation. If we don't find a way to address that, that in effect represents another budget reduction to the campus, particularly those areas that are in the realm of endowed funds. Athletic scholarships is also being affected here. We have a requirement under the NC2A to raise a certain amount of money for our student athletes. This is the number there. And because of the global financial situation, many donors who traditionally would be making contributions are not able or unwilling at this point to make those, so that's a challenge. The classroom renovation program, we try to spend approximately $200,000 on classroom renovations every year for physical renovation, and we fund that from the CSU minor capital outlay program, which relies on general obligation bonds. There are no general obligation bonds being issued at this moment, given the state's fiscal situation. And so it's not likely that we'll receive any minor capital outlay money, which will place the physical renovation of our classrooms for the '09-'10 year into jeopardy. And then we have operating deficits in the School of Extended Education, which really represents operating expenses for the schools that are unable to be generated in '08-'09 and '09-'10, or another $2,668,000. So not to be too dismal, but that's the state of fiscal affairs at the moment. We're looking at our campus to try to, the classroom renovation is the one area that we probably could defer a year and not do that this summer. We tend to do our renovations in the summer. But the other areas are pretty much required expenses to be met. Let me stop there and turn to my friend Andy, who is the observer of the Sacramento scene and has some good insights about what may happen in the next 30 days. That would be the May 19 election. So Andy, let me turn that to you.
Okay, thanks, Larry. As Larry just pointed out, we did not get the, hit the stimulus trigger, so the $50 million is gone. There are two more actual issues confronting us in the next two months that will have some impact on the finances of Sonoma State and the CSU. And one of them is the May 19 special election. For those people who are, you know, the special election, as you may know, has six different parts, 1A through 1F. 1A puts a cap on spending, has no immediate impact on the CSU for year one, would have impacts in years, in, for two years, they would be a little, we'd be underfunded a little less, and then after that, we would be, have a cap on it, which make it very difficult to get our funding back. 1B deals with putting $9.3 billion back into K-14. It is sponsored by the K-12 teacher groups. But 1C, D, and E are the ones that are, are the ones that have some impact on us. 1C deals with borrowing against the lottery. 1D is borrowing against early childhood education money, and 1E borrows against mental health spending. All of those will bring in short-term money. The first polls that came out, when they were first announced, all of them seemed to be doing sort of well. They're all being, of course, promoted by the governor and by the Democratic leadership in the legislature in a rather odd political alliance. They were doing very well in the field polls unless the governor's name was attached, at which time they lost between 23 and 30 percent of their support. Now they have been nailed directly to the governor, and the latest polls show that it's impossible to tell, but it's probably leaning against these passage. One of our, one of my colleagues or one of our colleagues here, who does a lot of work on the initiative process and does a lot of modeling, told me yesterday that, not surprisingly, voter turnout is going to be the real key of whether these pass or whether they don't pass. If they don't pass, it means that the whole $42 billion budget that was a lot of chewing gum, smoke, and mirrors to begin with gets more tattered. Okay? So there will be less money in the general fund of the state of California if C, D, and E don't pass. If B passes and A pass, because they're connected, there will also be less discretionary money because it will be going to K-14, which means that it shrinks the amount of money available to us over the long run. Okay? So that's the current situation. At this point, normally you say, the easiest way to predict how elections is going to come out, if it's based on low turnout. Low turnout tends to benefit the more conservative side. High turnout tends to benefit the more progressive side. But in this election, because of the way the issues are breaking out, even that's difficult to predict because, for example, the no-on-1A group includes the California Faculty Association and the Howard Jarvis anti-tax folks and the prison guards. It's an odd grouping, a somewhat uncomfortable grouping for some of us. So it shows that's what the election looks like. But at this point, if you were betting, I don't know what you would do. It's very, very close, but the trajectory is against the passage of many of those. On the other hand, 1F, which simply says that the legislature doesn't get paid anymore until you have a, unless you have a budget on time, may go down in history as the single proposition on the California budget that passed with the ballot, the highest in history. There's about 85 percent of the people in California will vote to not give the legislature their salaries. Okay? So that's where the current situation is on that. The other issue, of course, that we have to confront regardless of what happens on May 19 is, as most of you know, a couple of weeks ago, the budget analyst, or the Department of Finance said that no matter what happens, we're $8 billion short. That was the May revise in March, which was unusual because we expected this May revise in June after the election. Both Ruben and I have been looking at things, and he said he thought it was $10 billion, not eight, and I think he's probably right. So regardless of what happens on May 19, there's another potential hole for the budget for 2009, 2010 statewide of another, say, $10 billion, which will also have some impact. So I think I certainly agree with Larry that at this point, the $2.7 million shortfall is the most optimistic. But how bad it is, we will know more on the 20th of March, of May, and we will know more after the May revise comes out and there's a response to that. There is one additional piece of news, and that is there is a piece of legislation that I passed out a copy of that is going through, being introduced by Alberto Torrico, a Democrat in the Assembly, and that is that there is a piece of legislation to try and get the oil severance tax, we're the only state without one, and take that money and attach it only to funding of higher education. At this point, this, it's a long uphill battle in the first year, but that is the one positive piece of news. There are now seven sponsors in the state legislature to have a tax on the oil as it comes out of the ground. That would be a foundation for money that nobody can take away from us, not K-14 and not the prisoners, the prison guards. Okay? So that's the one semi-bright spot out there that I can report on at the moment.
In response to a number of questions that have come in, primarily to Susan's office and to my own, we wanted to also try to clear up some, answer some of those questions that some folks have, as well as open the door to other questions. We talked a bit about what happened in the stimulus package with respect to the $50 million trigger, but some might be curious to know what happened about the Green Music Center project that was also in the stimulus package, or at least we had hoped that it might be. I think the sense that most of us have at this point in time is that there will be very little capital money in the stimulus package for the California State University, for buildings, renovations, modernization, things of that nature. We do anticipate that there could be potentially some money for energy and sustainability projects, which the various campuses will be able to apply for. But other than that, it's not likely that we will receive much, if any, for green in the stimulus. So that's an issue that I know many of us were watching closely. But at this point, it does not appear to me that that will be a very likely scenario. Also, folks are concerned about, and many employees are concerned about, will anything happen with healthcare costs and benefits? Is a question that a number of our employees have raised. I'll try again. Okay? Thanks, Henry. I don't think there will be an impact on healthcare costs for any of our employees. Reflected in the mandatory cost number that you see there are the increased costs that we anticipate that we will have to absorb for health, dental, and vision. And so unlike what you might be hearing in other state employment areas or in other parts of the economy where employees are asked to take a greater share of these benefit costs, I do not believe that would be something that would be likely in the CSU unless that were negotiated with all of our various collective bargaining units. And that would be a protracted process. And I have heard nothing to that effect to suggest that we would be moving down that path. There are also some questions about the hiring freeze. People want to know, well, why are you still hiring people? Is it a hard freeze or is it a soft freeze? Or what really is the story with the hiring freeze on campus? We have been asked by, first, the governor and then the chancellor, to be very careful in hiring positions on the campus, both faculty and non-faculty employment. But President Arminiana has delegated that task to make the decision about whether to proceed with a position when it becomes vacant through the particular head of that division. In most cases, I think people are trying to be very, have a certain sense of perspective in what they're feeling and what they're not. If you go on the Internet, you'll see the current job postings are largely positions that are funded by self-support funds or grant-related activities, although there are certain positions that are being filled. So there's not a firm, hard hiring freeze, so to speak, at this point by President Arminiana. Each of the divisions is being asked to reflect upon their fair share of the budget reductions and make hiring decisions in an according way. Let's see. Another question that comes up to mind, what's happening with salary issues? Will there be salary increases in the '09-'10 year? The answer is, I don't know. And yes and no, and I don't know. There will be clearly hiring increases for the PPI program that we just reflected on. That's part of our contractual obligations with the California Faculty Association. So those raises will be provided, as I mentioned. There are no other, from the CSU's perspective, plans to raise salaries anywhere else, however. That's all part of the bargaining process, and there are, there's dialogue underway with the various collective bargaining units about that question. But if there were to be salary increases on top of what you see on this white piece of paper in PPI, clearly the campuses would have to clear the, you know, pay for those, for those costs. Students worried about registration. The registration cycle is going to begin soon, I believe. I'm kind of looking at Elaine and Bill, because they're the two deans that are right in my eye of, line of vision here. Dr. Arminiana mentioned this morning that, we had hoped that Dr. Achoa would be here today, but he has to be in Long Beach. But it's my understanding that Eduardo is working with the deans to mount a schedule, taking into account these budget reductions. And the deans are making a valiant effort to create a schedule that will allow students to get an adequate level of classes, although it's not an easy task. So I suspect that one of the fallouts that's likely to happen is that the availability of classes may not be as great as it might normally be. But I think the deans are making a very valiant effort to put together a schedule that will work to the best of their ability. We'll have to see how that works out. We'll have to muddle through. The events of May 19 could change things, and there's some speculation that if those numbers become worse after May 19, trustees may take other actions with respect to fee increases and things of that nature. So that's just a little bit uncertain. Another question that comes up is, are we hiring permanent faculty still? And the answer is yes. Here again, the deans know what searches were approved and think in most cases. I'd have heard nothing of any of those searches being canceled. So the permanent faculty that were approved to be hired are proceeding in line with plans put forward by the deans working with the provost's office. I think those are the main questions that came in to a variety of us over the period. It's very unsettling, I'm sure, for everyone in the room to come to these things and just hear this dismal news and not have any clear sense of what's going to happen next. People worry, will there be layoffs? We just came out of a meeting with President Arminiana earlier this morning, and he wished for me to communicate again that it is not his intent to move toward layoff. So, and I don't hear those kinds of conversations. I do hear that kind of conversation at some other campuses. I have heard other campuses are seriously looking at that particular issue. At that moment, it is not on the target, on the table here at our campus. But it is very unclear, and it's hard to even begin to make a plan because now we have to wait six weeks till the May 19, and then probably the aftermath of the May 19, as people struggle to figure out what we'll do depending on what happens on May 19. So I, the sense is that we're going to be in a very ambiguous period of time financially over the next months. So it will be a challenge, I think, for every member of the campus community to remain flexible and resilient in these times. I wish there was some more clarity that we could provide. But let me stop there and see if there are any other perspectives from my friends on the panel on these issues. And then, as we have in the past, it might be helpful to open up the dialogue for questions or observations about steps that members of the campus community feel we all should consider as we try to struggle through what will be a very challenging financial time. Tim, or Scott, or Derek, any observation?
Well, I don't want to say much. I think this is a better, better space for Q and A conversation than any further talking. But I guess I would like to assure everyone here, particularly the faculty, that I, as Chair of the faculty, I have communicated and continue to communicate, and will continue to communicate, to the President, my deep concern about the fate of our mission. I think about 10 years ago, and I got here 11 years ago, and even at that time, the talk was all about our mission being under threat, and people still, guys, sort of talk about our mission being under threat. And I guess that's kind of, and it's hard to find a good analogy. If our mission is under threat, it's like, well, a drug runner in Tijuana is under threat too right now. You know, there's, there's, our, our mission is under threat in the, in the way that somebody cowering in a dark hole, you know, afraid of bombs or something is under threat. I mean, it's hard to find the right analogy, but that's all I really want to say. I mean, I think that we, we are facing unprecedented assault. You know, I mean, it's puzzling, but, but our mission is facing an unprecedented challenge. Now, you know, it bears saying, though, that as we meet in London right now, the world is meeting, you know, to deal with a global challenge, you know? And so I try to live, and I, you know, all we can do here is invite you all to join us, really, live in this weird surreal space, you know, between trying to work locally within the state of California to preserve the CSU and to preserve what we know is wonderful and what we know works, and to communicate what we know that, really, there is a correlation between funding and effectiveness. There just is. That on the one side, and on the other side, you know, sort of absorbing the reality that the world is facing an unprecedented, almost, I don't know, nearly unprecedented readjustment. And it is, you know, probably unreasonable to think that that wouldn't affect us. So I don't know. That's one of the hardest things for me, is kind of living in that very fraught surreal space. I request your help in helping me in that, you know, negotiate that space, and I will offer whatever help that I can to you as well. That's all I have to say.
Can you guys hear me? All right, thank you. I want to pick up on that term unprecedented that Scott just used a minute ago. And I just wonder if people are getting that. I think this community, I've been here 11 years. I think we kind of have fire drill shock. We have been dealing with this budget crisis for 11 years in a row, since I've been here for one thing or another. How many people in the room right now are instructional faculty? Most of you I know from key Senate committees that just raised again. How many of you are students? So not a lot of students and faculty are in the room here. That concerns me. I don't necessarily feel that this campus community, I don't know if people are just resigned, alienated, or what, but I don't think that, I think this room should be packed with people who are going to be wondering, are they going to get their classes in the fall, and am I going to get work in the fall? Because we can say that we don't have a layoff policy, but what we're really saying is that the lecturers aren't going to be, if they're not protected by that policy, it's the lecturers who will lose work. And that relates directly to the point that Scott just made about mission. It is the mission that we won't be able to accomplish without our lectures. And what does that mean? Now, I'm all about problem solving. I like to sit down, roll up my sleeves, if I have long sleeves, how are we going to do this? I have no idea right now, and it's April. And I need to know, as somebody that's involved with faculty leadership and also with curriculum planning in my department, where I need help, and I asked Andy about this before the meeting started, is I need to know, what are the limits, for instance, of volunteerism? Volunteerism seems like one possible way to solve some of our problems. Individual faculty members could say, okay, I'll teach an extra class. But those things deprive lecturers of work. If four faculty take five extra students in their class, that's a section that a lecturer doesn't get anymore. Maybe those students get their education that way. I need to, and we need to start planning about those kinds of balancing factors. What does it mean? How do we not volunteer so much as faculty that we end up seeming to have lowered our SFR? Because each time we teach a class, it gets counted in the books in very odd ways, and that may be too esoteric for some of you. But I'm very interested right now in looking at the solutions that we've talked about in this meeting and other meetings seem to me like two to three to four to five are kind of solutions. Let's move to this kind of paperless office, or transition the way that we do certain business functions or things like that. We've got an immediate crisis that, to me, is going to mean a lot of lectures are going to lose work, and our mission is going to be impossible to achieve unless some other plan gets produced that I haven't heard yet. And I don't see that we've started, maybe the deans have started it, that's what Larry said, but I haven't yet seen at the department level where we're actually starting to really look at what that's going to mean. And are we developing six-year advising plans for our students? That's what my students asked me the other day. They want to know, who's going to help me figure out the financing and the curriculum planning for a six-year plan? Because I've got half my freshmen that didn't even get 30 units this year. So I'm just concerned about, like, how are we going to get into some more practical planning? And I want to invite and encourage not many faculty here, but people who are the stakeholders, to get involved and stay involved. It's going to require May, June, July, and this, that's when the stuff's going to either be done to you or you're going to help do it. So let's get involved and stay involved. That's my message.
Derek, any observation?
I mean, you really touched on the main concerns that students are facing, because we've talked about it before, which were, which is the registration and the amount of classes being offered, seeing that's something that affects every single student, no matter, you know, what background you come from. And then also, too, it's just a, right now, a waiting game for us to see what the Board of Trustees are going to do in May. So I would expect to see a much larger student turnout at our next town hall to kind of see what happens at that May Board of Trustees meeting and what, what happens with the fee increase.
Let's, let's see if there are any questions or observations or ideas. We, attached in the white pieces of paper are the ideas that we generated, I think it was at our November. And to Tim's point, some groups are actively looking at those. The Campus Reengineering Committee has taken up a number of them over the last two months and will continue to do so, and I'm sure other areas are being explored. But questions or comments or thoughts? But questions or comments or thoughts that we can try to help with? Hang on, John.
One observation is that, like...
Is it on? Is the microphone on?
It's sort of on.
Can you hear me?
I can.
For the video? Sorry. I need to switch the...
No.
One observation is that, again, we've got this paper that shows the amount that the department's short and so on, and we don't have any sense of the scale of, you know, what percent does that mean? Are we taking 10% here, 15%, 20% of 50% here? I can't understand it. You can present data to people and give them numbers without giving them a sense of how big it is.
Okay.
So, and I would ask in the future, you know, not in, just in this meeting, but in things like the President's Budget Advisory Committee and others, that we see percent terms, and so we know what that means. How can I adjust unless I can see that? The other idea that I have, I think, is an absolutely obvious idea, is we've got this land that we bought for faculty housing when the price were twice what they are now. You know, we paid, what, $5 million for it, it sits in a place where we can't get water or sewer legally. There's no water, no sewer. It's across the urban growth, outside the urban growth boundary. It's the kind of stuff that ought to be open space, and I think open space people would be interested in buying it. You know, if we can sell it for $3 million, that would more than cover what we got here. You know, and people say, oh, I'm going to save that for something, I don't know what, because you'll never be able to build on it. But even if we were going to save it, and we're saying then, our future use of that land and that money is more important to us than our present students. Now, maybe we want to save it, you know, and laying off the lecturers and so on. Maybe we want to do that, but I think that's a stupid thing to do. If you've got a $5 million chunk of parcel of land sitting there that's not being used, you know, the price will just go down. If we want five years from now, we want to buy a piece of land, it'll probably be cheaper. Let's sell the land and use that money to supplement our budget and help us through these tough times. Allocate it out through two or three years, you know, what we're looking at. I mean, there's a chunk of money. We ought to do that.
A couple points, and John, it's good that you asked the percentage question, I apologize for not doing that, but it's actually not that hard, because when we look at our operating budget, it turns out to be very close to about $100 million. So when you look at this number of 2.7, it's about 2.7%. And if you look at the other number and add it together, you'd about 5%. So if we're looking at the magnitude, it's about 5% of our operations are affected. And I'll try to make sure we put that on there, it's helpful. And on the land question, it's a fascinating question, because there's so many, there's diversity of opinion on that question. There are those folks who believe, like John, we should sell that land, and then there's a whole bunch of other people who say, that's the craziest thing ever heard. So somehow or another, we have to reconcile those ideas, but it is obviously a possibility. But if any folks that say, sell it, there are those people who say, don't sell it. So it's an interesting question, and I guess ultimately the President will have to deal with those, and our ideas, our work is to provide him with good advice on that point. But it's certainly one that, John, has been considered. Andy?
I just had a comment about, we're thinking about ideas, and this is premature, but it's happening on other campuses where it's being discussed. One of the things that we did in 2004, when we had another budget crisis like this, is that the California Faculty Association and California State University negotiated a change in the, temporary change in the contract about faculty early retirement program. That's the FERP program. The FERP program, as it currently, as it then existed is, you had up to five years, but if you took any time off, you couldn't come back. And what we did at that time is we negotiated with members, people in the FERP program who chose to take a year without teaching at all, could come back and get that year back. It is being proposed on other campuses, people are talking about it. It looks like, to our perspective, since it's not mandatory, but it may be something that could save some work for our colleagues that Tim was talking about. Our lecturers, who are so fundamentally vital, both for the quality they bring and for the work that they do. So that's the, one of the things that some people in the California Faculty Association, there's been some discussion with the Chancellor's Office. Nothing has been reached, it would have to be negotiated, but those are kinds of things that could have a short-term help, and it's one of the things that we are looking at. Additionally, as you may know, the House, there's a House resolution passed by the state legislature in support of the Century 21 project, which is a project to urge the Obama administration, if we can come up with $700 billion to bail out the banks. Maybe we could come up with 1/10 of that, $70 billion, to bail out higher education, public higher education in the United States. There's a great deal of support for that in the California Legislature, and they have sent a resolution of support of that to the National Legislature, and people have been in Washington DC lobbying on behalf of that to members of the Legislature. Last week, and the members of the Legislature thought, that sounds like a positive thing to do. We need to take advantage of the fact that, for the first time in a very, very long time, we actually have an administration that understands that public higher education is part of public education. And so that's a long-term solution, and it would benefit the entire United States, but it would benefit California, because we are 10 or 11%. It could bring in billions of dollars over a 10-year period, and that's another thing that you should look at as citizens. I'll let your legislators, this time Lynn Woolsey, Senator Boxer, Senator Feinstein, Mike Thompson, know about. So there are things that are being done in the long term, and there are some proposals in the short term. None of those things, none of the short-term proposals will be enough in and of themselves, so some of it has to be restructuring. As to Tim's question about volunteerism, there are contractual limitations on the amount of work that faculty can do. I mean, over and above their assigned time, and, you know, that's one aspect of it, and secondarily, of course, as Tim pointed out, volunteer work does not help our colleagues keep working, and volunteer work does increase the workload on those of us who are working, and volunteer work will give an artificial view of what it costs to teach the students. But we certainly understand that the importance of taking care of and helping our students. It's a complex issue, but there are some substantial downsides to voluntary work, but we do not absolutely say no, it's California Faculty Association, but you just have to be cautious.
I think there was another question there.
My name is Casey Jones, speaking of the Senate, associated students. I have two very specific questions for Mr. Mayfield. One is AVA's, or the bills, 656.7, school tax.
Yes.
Have they put out any projections about how much that would make if it was to pass?
No, they haven't, and the primary reason is that they are still negotiating the percentage of money they're going to take, taking it out of the ground. So if we could get 50 bucks a barrel, we'd be in Fat City. If we get 5 cents a barrel, we don't get too much. So at this point, they are still looking at, they're filling it in, and once we know how much we are projecting, once the bill has that in it, then we will be able to do projections. But it will be, over the course of time, it will be several hundred million dollars.
Excellent. And my next question is Proposition 1F, you said on the ballot this coming May 19th, legislature, you said they would have to forego pay. Do they get to claim that payback at the end of the, when they pass the budget? Do they give, like, grandfather clause, if they pass the budget, I give my last two months of pay now? Or do they not give those two months of pay?
That's an excellent question, I don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
These are exceptional circumstances, and I would like to see some kind of process put in place for triage. We have each division working separately right now. It would be nice if we could build into place a consultation process that would bring those divisions together, so that there'd be some kind of general agreement when priorities are established within a division, how those priorities play out relative to the whole institution. So I don't know what kind of, what our, Warham calls whitewater planning is in place, but I would like to encourage us to open this process of communication and negotiation up, so that we don't have disaggregated units working individually. Academic Affairs takes 58% of the hit right now, but we're not funded, really, when you take into consideration all the assessments and other things we have to pay out at the 58% rate. So our mission is already compromised. When we laid off over 100 lectures in 2003 or '04, we compromised our mission. Now we are below rock bottom, so we have to find a way to preserve our mission, not have the high 48% transfer out rate that we have of our freshmen and lower division students, and make sure that we don't have another panic with registration in the spring with insufficient classes, such that more students decide just not to come back at all. So my overall point is, let's try to create a process that's more engaging of all the constituencies together at those decision-making moments.
Can I respond to that quickly? Just to say very quickly, I think that's part of the point that Tim made, is I have made that point. I heartily concur that we need to be planning together. The only thing that I would add into this is that Academic Affairs is, is, how to put this, Academic Affairs is not the only division on campus that's really, that's really suffering. There are other divisions, particularly S A E M, that just probably cannot take, you know, their fair cut. So it is, it is a campus-wide conversation. It needs to be a campus-wide conversation, and I agree that it should be mission-centered. Thank you.
I'd like to piggyback on some of the comments that my colleagues have just made, because I think the generic wisdom of the situation is that it's going to get worse before it gets better, and that the generic strategy is to hope for the best and prepare for the worst. And along those lines, I think that Tim really hit the nail on the head in terms of the fact that we need much broader participation in the conversation. And I think one hour like this is perhaps just the beginning of a conversation that really needs to become major all across the campus. And I would piggyback on Susan's suggestion that we come up with a process for triage. I up the ante on that, and suggested, I think, one of the things we really need to do is make this crisis a centerpiece of the general education curriculum. Because unless we make it part of the curriculum, I don't think we're going to have the level of involvement that we need in order to do what needs to be done. And I think it's humorous at this point for any of us to think that we know what should be done, but I think that if we share our ideas and create the kind of campus dialogue that really needs to happen, that we're more likely to come up with more good ideas than if we leave it to the experts to try to figure out what the answers are. I think that in the, I think we need to recognize there are a couple of causes to the crisis. One is there's an immediate liquidity crisis resulting from a meltdown of the banking system. But there's a second cause of the crisis, and that's that we've been living in an unsustainable economy for a couple of decades. And so coming out of the crisis is going to involve major restructuring of the economy at the national level and also the local level.
International.
And at the international level. And if we leave it to the international experts and the national experts, we're not going to do what needs to be done at the local level. So I think Sonoma State needs to take a leadership role in helping us figure out what to do at the local level, and I think the way to do that is to make the crisis a centerpiece of the general education curriculum. I have a couple of ideas that I think we should be paying attention to in addressing the immediate crisis. Some of you are aware of the fact that Philip Beard and I have been looking at the complementary currency possibility for a number of years, and this is one set of strategies that could do something about the immediate liquidity crisis. It's not the whole story. Another thing I think we need to do is look at what needs to happen for the 10% or so of the people that are unemployed. And as Tim has indicated, unless there's a change in the worldview of the administration, by not counting, not rehiring lecturers as layoffs, we skew the distribution of who gets left out and home on this campus. And I think we need to look at that, both in terms of what's going to happen with the people that almost inevitably are going to suffer a layoff, and I think we need to look at things like in the county, building up the safety net in areas of food, shelter, and healthcare. I think we have the resources on the campus to take a leadership role in that kind of short-term planning. But I think the bigger challenge is to really look, oh, fat, addressing the immediate liquidity crisis that's got everybody up in arms and scared witless. And also, at the same time, look at what we can do to take a leadership role in addressing the long-term recovery, which needs to be based on redesigning the economic system so it's actually sustainable. Thank you.
It's a question, Barb in the back. Henry?
At the property that we owned on the north part of the perimeter road, could you rent it out and make money that way, or by selling it, would we take a loss on it?
We could certainly rent it, Henry. In fact, there is a farmer who has approached us that has expressed an interest to utilize it to grow, I forget the particular product, but there is an individual who's anxious to lease the land, and so we're analyzing that and looking at that. It's a good question, if we were to sell it today, whether we would lose money or gain money. The appraisal of the value of land has, on an appraised basis, says it's increased, but property values throughout the real estate market, of course, have plummeted. So my sense is that we would probably lose money if we were to sell it today. That would be my gut instinct.
Thank you. Professor Mayfield, on borrowing money against, like Proposition 8 through F, I believe you said, what is the long-term effect on those organizations that you're borrowing money against? How would it affect them and their employees and their, taking care of the people that need those programs?
Well, the claim is, one C is borrowing against the lottery. The borrowing against the lottery would also restructure the lottery in ways that aren't completely clear, and at the end of the day, the theory is that education probably would get a smaller share of the lottery than they get now, because they'd have to pay back the borrowing. The secondary aspect of 1C, which is, the one I'm talking about, is that the governor is, in one of his optimistic moods, when he talks about the value of borrowing against the lottery, he sees it around $5 billion. I'm, I'm seen the most optimistic that they could probably borrow $3 billion against it, some as low as less than $2 billion against it. So the long-term effect is we'd have to pay it back. It would probably, in the long run, mean less money for public education, and it's probably not going to be even as beneficial over the course of time as the promoters of 1C say. The one on borrowing against mental health money, the argument is, is that they have a reserve and they can't spend it all anyway. Obviously, taking money out of the mental health budget is a really bad thing to do in hard economic times, because there's one of these, there's an absolutely amazing negative correlation, right, is the economy goes bad, the need for mental health services goes up accordingly. The proponents of mental health for the public in the state of California thinks this would be disastrous. The other one is the taking away from early childhood care. Again, they claim there is a surplus, but in fact, of course, we don't fund all of the preschool care programs now. Now, it's interesting that the money they're borrowing against is money that Citizen Schwarzenegger put it on the ballot to get that money for preschool, to help preschool, because it was so important. Now Governor Schwarzenegger said, there's too much of it, we should borrow against it. On the mental health one, it was Senator Steinberg's initiative. Senator Steinberg, of course, is the President of the Senate, so it's a very complicated situation. But clearly would mean less money would be available for all of those services, and there really isn't a good case that we don't need the services, except for the lottery, and nobody knows what would happen with the lottery, quite frankly.
Tim has.
Yeah, I just want to make a couple more comments about the interplay between what, you guys know that I've never been a fan of corporatization. I've used that term to describe problems with thinking about higher ed. And where we're really in the grips of that right now is that as we deal with this budget crisis, one way of looking at it is, while the customers are still coming... crisis, one way of looking at it is, well, the customers are still coming, right? There's more students trying to get into the CSU right now than ever before, right? Are we, are we raising student fees too high? Well, they're still paying. So when you just look at it like supply and demand, and we have input and output, we can keep, what, people are still coming in, yeah, a lot of them are dropping out, but we're graduating plenty, they're still paying their fees, we're still getting our fees that the students are paying. That way of looking at it is one way of looking at it, and it has to do with some things that I'm concerned about in higher ed. As a faculty member here, I just ask your patience, sometimes if we sound cranky or ornery, when we're trying to defend academic standards and programmatic integrity, because that's what it's really about. When it comes to saying, we can just raise class size or eliminate big chunks of our curriculum, what happens is you're compromising the quality of education that students are getting. And we know that, and that's what we're here to try to defend. And sometimes, I know it's hard to see that, because I value all the aspects and all the people who work at a university. Sometimes it seems like, you know, the faculty are saying, well, we matter more than the rest of you, we're more mission-centered. We, we just have to be the ones who are making the claims, it seems. And sometimes we feel like we're put in this position of having to be very cranky against forces that are really much larger even than anybody here on this campus. But we have to say, this won't pass. We can't do this anymore. We won't teach writing in that big of a class. We won't just waive graduation requirements so we can get students through, because we think these things matter to their quality. And I think we need to strategize very concretely in the next couple of years, how we are going to preserve academic quality and the reputation of this very fine institution, without making too many compromises while we deal with this. So you're just going to hear that from us. And, and, you know, sometimes that sounds divisive, but it, I, I think we really have that quality at heart in, in, in most of our messages.
Henry?
Can I just speak up?
Sure.
With the Northland, as the wine industry seems to be progressing into involving the sale of wine, could the university use that property to create its own basic winery, the mode it has from the wine business that we have here at the university? Would that be a financial growth for the university that would continue to grow as we make hopefully good wine that we can export?
We have never really analyzed that. We're coming up to the end of our time, and if I could just make a few closing comments. First, as always, this has been very helpful, at least to me, I'm sure every member of the panel, and I personally am grateful for the comments that have been made. So thank you so much for your willingness to share them. I think the next, what we see on, the next big worry, I think, as Andy alluded to, is the May 19th elections. And if they all pass, I think we might be not in such a difficult situation. If things go awry there, we're going to have to take another look. I want to come back to Susan's point, that this $5 million on this piece of paper is a lot of money, and if that's all it turns out to be, we may be able to figure out ways to triage that for a while, for a year. It's difficult to even put your head around that until you know what happens on the 19th. So, but we should begin the planning. And so one of the things that I'm going to ask my colleague Eduardo Ochoa to do is to help me understand better the implications on the curriculum and quality of this projected 1.5 million. What does that really mean? I already have a good sense of it from Matthew on the student affair side. He and I have been in a little closer conversation, because the number's smaller and it's easier to get your hands around, and I'm quite clear on the 768 in my own area of responsibility. But we need to understand that and then juxtapose it with some of the other issues to see what we want to place on hold for a year, or two, or three. Because I don't think this situation's going to correct itself in just one year. So, but we have been in the financial office studying many questions about our interest earnings, our debt position, other sources of, other strategies that we're working with people in Long Beach to see how they might be able to help us. So I think we can solve some of them, but if it goes above this piece of paper, I think we're in a very difficult situation. I don't have a good strategy, but it would be helpful in time, in preparation for our meeting in May, which is our next town forum, when we'll know the results of the election. I think we've scheduled it so that it's post-election. We'll know the results of what the trustees did, for us to be able to think, we'll know what's going on with the spring schedule, I would think. Students will have registered by then. But I think that's all I, I can say, is that I do agree that it is getting time now to figure out just how to package a budget to keep the place afloat for the next year. It's, it's time now to start resolving that with a body that maybe doesn't exist yet. I don't quite know how that is to be worked through. But I, I know the players, I just don't quite know how we, we do that, but we'll, we'll work on that. But thank you again, and for my colleagues on the panel. Appreciate everyone's willingness to continue to hang in there, and hopefully we'll see you all in a, in a few weeks, if not before. Thank you so much.
I'm only laughing because I think there was a suggestion for more meetings.
Yeah.
We need more meetings.
No, I applaud this.
Okay.
More meetings.